Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, July 3rd, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item this morning is under judicial system. We have a resolution requesting approval of an agreement with the Flint Judicial Circuit Public Defender's Office. Our presenter is Kelly Bush, Court Financial Administrator, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning. This is the resolution that we discussed yesterday in the work session. It's the annual renewal of the agreement between the Flint Judicial Circuit Public Defender's Office in Henry County to provide the public defender's office. The state provides a public defender to assistant public defenders, an investigator, and an office manager, and a paralegal. And then the county provides the other eight additional assistant public defenders and five additional administrative positions. But the way the county provides them is the state pays them, the state invoices us, we pay the state for those employees' salaries benefits, plus a 5% administration fee. So with this contract in the resolution, and in the contract, it also changes it so that any vacancies that become available in the public defender's office will be filled as county employees going forward.
Does any board member have a question or comment, Mr. Bowman?
Madam Chair, and I'll address this to the county attorney. My brother is the state-appointed Flint Judicial Court Public Defender. I feel like that I should recuse myself from being in the conversation as well as the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Bowman, I think that has been pretty much your position on prior occasions, so thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. I don't think I need to leave the room for that because I'm not going to get involved, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Are there any other questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution accepting and extending and approving the agreement, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, and is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. All right, the next item is under social services. We have a resolution requesting approval of the Family Connections Operating Grant for Connecting Henry from the Georgia Department of Human Resources. Again, our presenter is Kelly Bush, who is now in her position of Vice Chairman for Connecting Henry, and that's Exhibit Number Four.
Good morning.
Good morning again.
This is the department, the Georgia Department of Human Resources provides Connecting Henry with a operating grant. It's no match. It's gone down, it's gone up, it's currently $45,000 this year. This is just a resolution authorizing the acceptance of that grant.
Does any board member have a question or comment?
Madam Chair, Kelly, could you explain what the $45,000 would be used for in Connecting Henry?
It's an operational grant, so it'll go towards salaries. As y'all know, Connecting Henry is our, is our community collaborative part. They connect all the different organizations out there. Let's see, I've got the, I don't have, I'm sorry.
Well, Darryl, Darryl Dawson is here. Darryl, would you like to come up?
What Connecting Henry does.
I just think that it's important, many people don't know what Connecting Henry is, and I think that the public needs to be made aware.
There were many things, actually, but primarily where the Georgia Family Connections, and as Kelly said, what, with the Family Connections, our job is to take current resources in the county and utilize them for programming for strengthening family and children. So we do...
They've got communities and schools, that was a grant that they got, the youth at risk.
We do the youth work program where we put 16 to 21-year-old students who have dropped out of school, help them get their GED, also get them a paid internship. We support the schools, not the schools, the courts, and the accountability courts by providing some case management services. We're also looking to develop a career training center, which is something we're really excited about.
That's fine, I just think it's important that the people know Connecting Henry doesn't mean anything to some people other than two words. But I think it's important that they know what these funds go for.
You have, you have your own website, don't you?
We do.
Go ahead and give that info.
ConnectingHenry.org.
ConnectingHenry.org?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Preston?
I was just going to add, when we were doing economics and education, the task force, they were very instrumental in a lot of the, they still are, is ongoing on a lot of the implementation of what's going to hopefully impact a lot of the children and young people in the community, too.
We're currently working with the state, they're getting ready to implement a quality rating system that's going to bring all the early learning childcare centers under a consistent standard to get children ready to enter the Henry County public schools, or really any Henry County school. And so we're going to be working with them to implement this system countywide, so we're really excited about that, too.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to approve the operating grant for Connecting Henry from the Georgia Department of Human Resources, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution requesting acceptance of the Federal Transit Administration Fiscal Year 2012 Grant. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, and that's Exhibit Number Five. Good morning.
Good morning. We are requesting permission to extend this grant. This grant started in nineteen, 2008. It is a grant from the Federal Transit Administration for urbanized programs. The way that the funds are dispersed is based on the population density and transit services in the metro area. ARC has notified us of our allocation for the next year, which is $296,366. There is a 20% local match, and those funds are included in the budget. This is a four-year, actually a four-year grant cycle for this particular, these particular funds.
And you're going to use that for bus preventative maintenance supplies, IT, office equipment, vehicles, and security enhancements?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, any questions?
Mr. Stamey?
David, you said this is a four-year grant, is this the first year in the four years, are we?
Yes.
Okay, so we have four more years to receive.
Four more years to use this particular allocation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution of the Board of Commissioners pertaining to the Federal Transit Administration funds, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. If I could, one of my last meetings here with you, Commissioner Holder asked about how many trips we might be doing over this last year. I'm happy to report 93,901 trips. We didn't make 100,000, but we did break a record.
That's good, and that's good information. Those, those are things that, when we're talking about public awareness, I think the public needs to know what these are, and those that utilize Henry Transit, and those that don't care, really need to know what those funds are used for, and how many trips, and how many people that it has helped over the years. So that's over 93,000 trips. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Moving on to public safety, we have a resolution requesting acceptance of grant funding from the Georgia Trauma Care Network Commission. Our presenter is Chief Brad Johnson of the Fire Department, and that's Exhibit Number Six. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We applied for the grant through the Trauma Commission of Georgia for reimbursement of uncompensated care funding. This grant is applied for and approved through submission. We received a notification we're approved, and a check for $11,898.56 from the Trauma Commission. I like approval today to accept that check. There is no match, it is 100%. The check is designed, or the program is designed to help fund EMS training and EMS equipment.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing acceptance of the funds, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, right before you leave, I just want to tell y'all, as, as the department, y'all did an awesome job this weekend responding to that, that tragedy we had up there off in Stockbridge Flipping area. I mean, 14 homes, that's, that's something you don't train for every day, but the response time, nobody had anything but positive to say about y'all. Y'all did a great job, 105 degrees, probably almost 250 degrees were in the environment that y'all were working in.
It was very hot. The gentleman did a great job, the personnel, they were there within four minutes. First engine company had two people on it, and they went, had a report of a missing child, started their search, started extirpation, and did a great job. Our personnel is, you know, second to none.
Y'all made everybody look good this weekend, awesome job.
Thank you.
Moving on to public works, we have a resolution requesting approval of a state aid contract with GDOT for a box culvert replacement at Singly Drive. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, Exhibit Number Seven. Good morning.
Morning, Chairman, Board Members. In February of 2011, it was necessary for the DOT to close the Singly Drive Bridge over Wolf Creek due to damages that caused the bridge to fail. Due to a lack of funds in the DOT budget, we're not able, we're not able to repair that bridge or bring it up, so we went to Georgia DOT for some funding, for some state aid funding. GDOT has approved that funding for the repairs and improvements, and today we have that contract. We have already put that culvert out to bid, it's been awarded to Sunbelt in the amount The state aid, the contract was for $143,994.30. The state aid contract is for $143,107.18, being a difference of $887.12, and I think I can find that in my budget. So with that, we are asking the board to accept this GDOT contract in that amount so we can get that project going finally.
Mr. Holder, I know this is in your district, did you want to make a comment about this?
I do, I really do. As you see, the bridge has been out since February of 2011, so by the time this bridge is replaced, that road will have been closed for two years. And you can only imagine that being kind of in the center of the road, the, the problem that it's created for the people that live and use that road as a travel, as a route. Terry, this road, this bridge will be designed back to where, when this road is paved, if and when it's paved, and I hope it gets in the next SLOSP program to complete the network of roads around the Locust Grove High School, that this bridge is designed so that you will not have to go back and widen the bridge, it's, it's in place to where you can pave and go, is that not correct?
That is correct. When we, we actually have gone ahead and did a preliminary road design and a profile, and then we aligned this, this is actually a box culvert that's going in there instead of a bridge, but we aligned it so when we come back and do the grading, that we don't have to touch anything there, it'll be long enough, we won't have to extend it, do anything. So it's going in there just like we were going to pave the road. And we're actually having to do a re, a little bit of realignment in there to do that when we put it back, but yes, or the, one of the major costs of that road would, would have been this box culvert, and it certainly will decrease the cost of it when we get ready to come back and pave it, so.
This is just sort of a side question, but I know in the past, when we have done bridge replacements or repairs on a dirt road, that the approaches to the bridge, we went ahead and paved, the approaches to save the, the base that you put up there, is this going to be a part of this one, or do you not?
Well, since this is a box culvert, we won't have approach slabs as such, it'll be just, dirt goes back over the top of the box, so we'll probably just put this one back as, as dirt. But if it was a bridge, we, we probably would need to consider that.
As Commissioner Stamey is, is so aptly refers to many times, pavement ends, it are signs in my district. Some of that was because of what we're talking about with bridge replacements, and we made approaches and paved approaches, and it says pavement ends and pavement ends, which is not good, but nevertheless, I saw one in his district the other day, too, so.
Is it in my district this time?
Next year will be in my district.
No, it's in your district now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to give, I'm going to give you a bunch of dirt roads, whoever's going to be in District Three for the next cycle, it's going to be, you're going to get some dirt roads, I can tell you. Okay.
Terry, I know that we are also in the process of looking at stormwater and how we need to potentially amend what stormwater funds are allowed to be used for, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to include culverts in that. And I just was wondering if you could give us an update on where the consultant is at in looking at stormwater funds and, and the ordinance and bringing back a recommendation.
Yeah, consultants been working real well, and I think we've made a lot of progress in that regard. We have gotten with them and went over the workload, are showing them the magnitude of how many culverts in the county need to be replaced, and the program that we've put in place to replace those and the cost, we have gone through that. We've looked at the budget, you know, trying to see how we can rebudget and arrange the budget so we can facilitate that. I would say probably, I may get in trouble for this one, but I would think within a month or two, we should be coming to the board with, with those changes and, you know, kind of explaining how that's going to work and the magnitude and, and some things, so we're satisfied that that's going to be a good measure to address these type problems. We're far enough along that we can, you know, we feel like there's enough money in stormwater that we can, I would say rebudget because we have accomplished some tasks in the past that we don't have to keep funding, so we're going to reallocate some sources, and I think that'll be a, a real good advantage for the county, so we don't have to come out of fund balance. I think that stormwater money will help pick up this, you know, this problem and solve it. So within a couple of months, I would think we'd be before the board, but it's coming well.
Yeah, I know we have a number of culverts that will, are going to have to be addressed, and, and I couldn't imagine as a citizen living in this area what an inconvenience it is to have some, a crossing, a stream crossing closed for almost two years, and I'm sure that also impacts the ability of emergency services to respond to calls and things like that, so it's important that we move ahead with that as quickly as we can.
Yeah, I have several friends of mine that happen to live on that road, and I get weekly reminders, so I'm, I told them, I think I'll be just as happy to bring this to the board and get this started as they are. The, the next step in this, just, GDOT, once a week, the board signs this resolution, if y'all pass it and authorize the chairman to sign it, goes back to GDOT. The only other step we have, they send us back a notice to proceed, then I can release the contractor to go to work. So I plan on seeing if I can hand-deliver this back up there to expedite it even faster so we can get this moving.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the chairman to sign the contract with GDOT on this culvert replacement, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Chairman, Board Member.
The next item on the agenda is under the county manager, which is a resolution requesting award of a contract for the Atlanta South Regional Airport Runway Striping Project, and our presenter is our county manager, Fred Alletta, and that's handout number one.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Trying to think of the exact date. The board approved Croy Engineering to go ahead and present, to create the engineering drawings for the striping of the runway. As you recall, we were basically put in a position with, with GDOT that this created, the way this striping was, we needed to get it done, it was extremely deficient. When we took it over, it was in that condition, and they strongly recommended that for safety reasons, we get the striping done first and foremost. The packet was prepared by Croy, forwarded to GDOT, they approved it, their recommendations, we went, went ahead then, our purchasing department handled this. Any questions you may have along those lines on the purchasing side of it and the bid, I've got Rod Gray here who can assist. The vendors were given 10 days because of the need to get this done. They responded with their insurance requirements and bonding and pricing. We did receive two, the three did respond back to this solicitation, and I'm here to request rewarding it to peak pavement marking for thirty, of Columbus, Georgia, for $39,550. And the second bidder was $46,622, highlight marking. Any questions, I'll either answer or have Rod Gray as well.
Mr. Preston?
We're only covering 10% of that because the FAA will reimburse us 90% of it.
Critical, critical answer, yes. The answer is yes. It was in there and I didn't get that, yes.
What do you think, Mr. Preston?
It's not only the runway, but it is throughout the whole, the drawing's about yay big, if I showed it, couldn't get it up here, but it's, it's the whole premises where there's pavement into, even into the hangers. It is a requirement, some questions were raised, is it really necessary, but the answer per GDOT is yes. That was part of the design work and required by GDOT, and designed accordingly to their specs and signed off, and again, once those specs were done, RFP was put together, submitted, as I said, and the bids came back.
Will it be done by Labor Day weekend, correct?
Labor Day weekend? I would expect it's probably going to be done before that, I think it's, isn't it about a 30-day project or something? It's about a 30-day project, and, and part of the other aspect of this is why this became, not only a request of GDOT to get done, but also to get done ASAP, is because of, again, the conditions then, and also, I think they want to get the money spent this year as well, so we were trying to get that done in accordance with that as well, so money can be allocated and spent.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you awarding a contract for Atlanta South Regional Airport Striping Project to Peak Paving LLC of Columbus, Georgia, for $39,550, with grant funds covering 90% of this project, and I will entertain a motion. And we have a motion to approve by Mr. Preston, a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of the standard rates and charges scheduled for the Atlanta South Regional Airport, and that's handout number two.
I'll thank you again. We took the airport over, there really weren't any specified rates published, and we've been working with prospective tenants, as well as the tenants that are there, and trying to get new leases. A review is done of all the existing prior leases, the rates, and this fee schedule just represents what presently is in place with the various renters there, to give us some standardization and concurrence of what we're presently doing. It also gives it the opportunity to have standard pricing published for future negotiations and contracts on whatever space we have available that's not presently rented. I'll take questions, I guess, from here.
And these, these rates can be revised at any time. If we see that other airports in the metro area are making adjustments, then we can also do that in the future, correct?
Yes, we can. We do have comparisons that are done by our airport manager on not only these type things, but also fuel to make sure we're competitive on a weekly and monthly basis. Of course, when people come to see us and want to rent space, they carry with them what the going market is usually, and we can validate that that is the case. As far as the amount of space we have, most of this is rented. Couple of months ago, or about a month ago, you approved two leases for some space we did have open, and again, we're going to continue to get what empty space we have leased, bring income in, it's just sitting there idle. We don't have a lot of hangar space at the present time, which is a good thing.
Does anybody have a question or comment pertaining to this item, Mr. Bowman?
I don't, it's a question because I'm, I'm sorry that I missed yesterday, but I understand that, I did understand you say that Abports has done a preliminary survey of the surrounding area and...
Yes, they, they have, and the rates that we presently, again, a review of the contract was done, it, what we're presently charging is a little different, but these are each of the ones that are lettered on that map that's included, this was the map, and it, it's a location you should have color coded to indicate what's what, hangers, shelters, FBO, other hangers, land leases and so on. These yellow up here, the color's a little different, but these are the land leases, and again, with that, then we do have contracts, and again, a review of the contract rates was done, and those are the rates, and that's what's published there. And so for the most part, these are people that have leases at the present time, and from a competitive standpoint, they're here, we feel, based on the fact that's where they want to be and the rates are competitive to keep them there.
Abports has, to my knowledge, has been with us almost since the beginning, not exactly the beginning, but pretty close to it. How many, how many airports do they manage currently? Do you know that off the top of your head?
I don't know off the top of my head, I believe it's around 10, but I'm, I have to go back to my initial research I did and when we were reviewing who they were, what they were, but...
I know that they were, they were very helpful in all of our negotiations and other things.
We have, we've had weekly meetings since probably January, conference calls, and we use their conference call number, call in, Mike Bush and myself, occasionally County Attorney Latonya Wiley is on there on issues, we discuss operations, we discuss the competitiveness, we discuss fuel, the contracts, we've been getting the hangers, the design, construction, et cetera. It's usually about a two-hour call, and it's, we're now able, with a lot of stuff behind us, to do those on a, on a, every other week basis, but to your point, they have seven people on that call of varying degrees of expertise that we're able to draw on, from operations to engineering and every other service that you can conceivably think of, so they're a part of that conversation, including their finance people as well.
So suffice to say that they are the experts and we're kind of the novice, but I, I know that we'd had several meetings with them, and Madam Chair, in every meeting that I've had with them, they've been extremely professional, and I felt like that they, they were doing exactly what we wanted them to do, which is make it the most efficient run airport in this area, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you for pointing that out.
And this is a reminder, the contract we have, they don't charge for the services, though those people that provide those services to assist us in making those types of reviews, we do pay for the airport manager, but other than that, the involvement is all the way up to the president of Abports on these calls and other issues. I call him, probably talk to them no less than twice a week, one or all their people and various issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Do we have any, Fred, do y'all have any idea with these updates, what, what additional revenue we'll be talking about, any estimates?
These are really not additional revenues, this is basically a stamping, if you would, and approval of the rates that are presently in place, so it'll can keep the existing revenues the same. As, as space that we have available becomes avail, comes, we have opportunities to lease it, they will, they will fall within these ranges, these, these pricing. To the extent they don't, then we'll have to come before you and give you reasons as to why it is what it is that's being requested, based on the ability to get more money or competitive pressures, whatever it may be, to, to lease that space. There are conditions, and we already had those, if you recall, in some of the prior leases, and one was a short-term, three-month lease, another one was, we had all that space sitting there. So there are circumstances that come up from time to time, not to discriminate, but to basically, I mean, it's not like we've got people knocking down our doors today with the airport still in the status that it's in, wanting to come here, but we hope down the road, as we improve the airport, we will have that knocking down of the doors and request to, to be here and rates can firm up a little stronger.
Fred, how much available unoccupied space do we have for lease, or do you have an idea at this point?
We had, and it was supposed to happen last week, there was half of a hanger, 5,600 square feet, that we thought we had leased, that the tenant was waiting for something to happen, and thus, when it happened, then they would be needing that space. That has not happened yet, so that space is still there. I did have a request from someone... I did have a request from someone from Promaker, Ashley, who said they've had a possible tenant for one of them for ten thousand square feet, and we don't have that much space. We just had fifty-six, and depends on the timing of these other people, if they do come through. We do have some tee hangars, shelters, or whatever. Some of them are in, in pretty bad repair that I don't think people really want to rent them the way they are. And of course, tie-downs are there and everything else. I've got a report, and I wish I would have brought it, I should have been prepared, but I wasn't, I wasn't expecting to be up there. But there is a report we get weekly, and I can, I will email that to each of you to see the type of information. It's a two-page worksheet. It's by week, and then summarized after four weeks or a month. That recaps the amount of fuel we sold, the price we sold of that, the, what we paid for the fuel, the amount of space that's available, the amount of space that is under lease, and of course, available. But the report is, is updated weekly to include all that information, and I will forward it after this meeting, last week's report.
It seemed like there were about a, about a half a dozen or so tie-downs out there. Some of those planes look like they haven't been moved in a while, but...
There are people that have planes that have not moved in a long time, and there, we had some issues with some people that were behind on their rent, and conversations were had, and, you know, became down one of, they're sort of stuck keeping it there, they really would like to sell it, they haven't used it in years, but they are paying the rent as, as scheduled. So, yeah, there are people that have it, there's some that I think want to sell their planes if the market does not rate where it needs to be for them to put that on the market.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution that sets the standard rates and charges for the Atlanta South Regional Airport, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority for Millage Collection Services, and that's handout number three.
Ken, thank you. Henry County is required by a local amendment to the Georgia Constitution to levy an annual basis of two-mill at the lower tax on all taxable property within Henry County on behalf of the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority. By legislation, a hundred percent of the proceeds collected from this tax are paid to the Water Authority. There's administrative costs involved in the assessment, collection, and payment of this tax to the Water Authority. This year, there's been negotiations, and the Water Authority has agreed to make an annual payment of a hundred thousand dollars to Henry County for providing the service. First payment will be made on December one, two thousand and twelve, and this will be a budgeted income item this year for the first time on, for that, for that collection. And unmistakant, Commissioner Holder was instrumental in, in working with Lindy Farmer, General Manager of the Water Authority, in assisting to get this negotiation done and get it, so obviously, thank you for your work in doing that.
Yes, I think, as Mr. Holder had indicated, that the enabling legislation that created the Water Authority did not provide anything within it that would mandate that the Water Authority reimburse Henry County anything for the collection of these fees, so they're doing that voluntarily. And certainly appreciate Lindy Farmer and the Water Authority for assisting us with the cost of, of having to collect those taxes. And, you know, they've been very good with working with this board, especially in the last year or so, with the, with the lowering of their water and sewage impact fees to help us with economic development. It's been a great partnership with the Water Authority, and I just wanted to say that.
I'd just like to make a comment too about it, in the fact that, as it's already been stated, legislation prevented any participation with the county for the collection of the two-mill tax. And this was important, we're all in tough economic times, so in dealing with Lindy Farmer, the General Manager, we, we had to come up with something that was legal to do. They don't have to give us anything, but I, the right thing to do was to participate. And I give credit to Lindy, because we, between the two of us and whatever, and the attorney, Letonya, we devised a plan within it through an intergovernmental agreement. And I want to give you a brief history lesson, and if you just endure it. Part of the thing that caused this, back many years ago, when I was on the school board, the law allowed the county to charge the school board up to two-and-a-half percent of the total taxes collected. The law allowed it. In many counties, throughout the hundred-and-fifty-nine, charged from zero to two-point-five. That really bothered me. And while I was on the school board, and later came to the Board of Commissioners, I said then, if there was anything that I could change, I wanted to see that changed out of, as a fairness issue. The two-and-a-half percent of the school board's taxes at the time, or think about it, our school taxes are about sixty to sixty-five percent of our total taxes, so two-and-a-half percent of that actually funded the Tax Commissioner's Office and the Tax Assessor's Office, with the exception of about three-hundred thousand dollars. It was, there was almost three million dollars that it was costing the Board of Education for the county to collect their taxes. Don't think that's fair. If they, if they're collecting sixty percent of the taxes and it's going to the school board, I think the amount that the school board should be charged should be somewhere close to the amount of, of the taxes that we are collecting. And luckily, it took ten years to get it done, and, you know, government works slow, I guess, but it took about ten years to do it. But that's what we, by resolution, adopted, saying that we would charge the school board their fair proportionate share, and I think that's fair. Hospital was, was charged, was paying a two to two-and-a-half, two percent, I believe, Mike's not here, this is on a two percent collection fee, for the one-mill of tax that the hospital had. Water Authority, by legislation, didn't have to. But again, I want to go back and thank Lindy and the Water Authority Board for, for stepping to the plate and doing the right thing. And this one hundred thousand dollars, if you look at the resolution, that is not the two percent. But we are actually phasing in, and they're willing to pay their proportionate share so that we don't impact anybody's budget drastically in a one-year period. So that's some of the background of, of why we are doing this, to try to make, get everybody on, on an equal basis.
I agree. I agree with Commissioner Holder. I feel like that, you know, the surrounding counties around us don't have a two-mill tax on their water, but there's a lot of counties around us that love to have our water too. I think Lindy and the, the group, the, the entire Water Authority has just done a tremendous job in keeping Henry County ahead of the curve when it comes to water and other issues. I just think it's important for the citizens to realize that there is a two-mill assessment, basically, on, on the tax, on your property taxes that goes to the Water Authority. I mean, that's, that's where it goes, and, and, you know, and I, I believe, it seems like it's twenty-thirty is every time we've heard a, a bond issue. I may be wrong on that date, but every time they came back to renew a bond, you know, we've, we came back and we've had the bonds continually not go past that twenty-thirty date, you know. What happens then, you know, we, I don't know, we may, we probably won't be here at that time, but at the end of the day, I, I think they've done a really good job, and I want to thank Commissioner Holder for stepping in and having those conversations that we're able to bring them more in line with what the other department, not departments, but constitutionals are paying to do some, you know, to work with us. Thank you, Commissioner Holder, and that's all I have, thank you.
Reed, answer my question.
If there are no further questions or comments from the Board, you have before you a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Henry County Water and Sewage Authority for Millage Collection Services, and I'll entertain a motion. We got a, a motion by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval of an agreement with Croy Engineering pertaining to capital improvements at Atlanta South Regional Airport. Our presenter is Fred Oletta, County Manager, exhibit number three.
Good morning again. The executive summary was changed, as, was an oversight yesterday, was brought up, that does say Atlanta South Regional Airport, which is, which is where it belongs. In any event, the, yesterday, after, there was, as those commissioners were here yesterday, heard all the discussion regarding the, the local vendors and the contracts and the process and everything else. After the work session, discussions were had. As Mr. Croy mentioned yesterday, on behalf of his firm, he is sympathetic and, and does want to work with local vendors. This morning, we came together and met with Michael Elliott of Metro Engineering, and if I could, I'd just like to bring Mr. Croy up and have him explain where we're at as far as his, his ability now to work with the vendors.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. After the discussions yesterday, as, as, as your manager mentioned, you know, having heard the discussion about the importance of involving local vendors, as I said yesterday, I understand where my mail comes, and I understand the importance of, of being local. I went back and reviewed, as you might remember, the survey work we were going to do in-house, Croy Engineering operates its own survey crews. Went back and looked at my workload and, and, and found out it was just some of my workload and approached Metro to come and do the ground survey for the airport. They have agreed, and, and should y'all approve the contracts today, Metro will be doing the, the, the survey work, the ground survey work as relates to work on the airport and become part of the Croy team.
And Mr. Elliott is here, if he, just to validate, if you would, since, if you wouldn't mind, to validate that there is an agreement, so that everybody understands it's...
I'm sorry, I don't own two suits, so that's why I'm here in a, in a golf shirt today. Uh, no, definitely, Fred, yours wouldn't fit, it wouldn't. Yesterday was an emotional time, I think we saw that. There's a lot of skin in this game, right here, right here, and throughout this community, okay? I've been accused of a lot of things, but being an idiot is not one of them, okay? I believe in the golden rule that I've taught in Sunny School, and do unto others you've hadn't do unto you, but one of my dear clients I've shared for twenty years has instilled upon me to also know the golden rule, that he with the gold rules. And so, with that, I called Mr. Oletta last night, we brokered a meeting this morning at eight o'clock, Mr. Croy and I, as I've stated before, there is no issue between the two opposing firms here. We all got to work in the same sandbox outside of Henry County. We work throughout the southeast and the state of Georgia, and so does he. But he understands the bigger picture. He and I have a gentleman's agreement, we're going to work. He's called the survey crews back home, they're not out there today, it's my crews going to work, and I appreciate it. So, thanks. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
And I may not be weak and break down like this, but this is important. I thank y'all for working with us, and Mr. Croy. And we're going to do right by you like we have for eighteen years down here. So, with that, deal's cut, I'll grab my hat, hand to the door, and go to Hampton, go to work. So, thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
The other local vendor, there's, they were not in the meeting this morning. We did speak about that. Mr. Croy and his people will be getting with CMS and working with them to see if there's any way to bring the two together. I did show them the bid, if you would, that was used for LPA, so they could understand the workload differences, if any, and as a result, would work with them and see what they can do to, to come to an agreement to... There's, there was a big difference, as was mentioned yesterday, in the price as to what they submitted to LPA versus what ATC that Croy had used, and so they're going to sit down. And the conversation I had with Mr. Johnson on Sunday, he felt that absent a couple of things that may have been required, not required, that Croy doesn't feel necessary, but things that are still being done that are needed, that he felt his, he could get within that figure. So, that again, is going to be left up to Mr. Croy and Mr. Johnson to work with and try to bring that to a same conclusion.
I want to say how much I appreciate Mr. Croy reaching out to our local, our local vendors and local businessmen here. It is important to Henry County. We do support our local businesses at every chance that we get, and we do appreciate you respecting and honoring that and trying to do the same as well. This airport is important to all of us here in Henry County, so thank you for your time spent on that.
With that said, the, there is no change in yesterday's price, as, as was given at the two-hundred-and-seventeen, plus the expenses. The resolution I mentioned yesterday, I believe it is, is for not, not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty, because there are some expenses over and above the two-seventeen. As listed, they are less than three thousand dollars, and so they cover the expenses that were listed, so the resolution, as I said, is not to exceed two-twenty. It does obviously outcome before the Board for whatever that is, don't expect that, but that's, that's what's before you to approve.
Mr. Preston.
I wanted to just compliment Mr. Croy for being willing to look at this, because when I, the local businesses, it was not just the, the portion that was going to the local, because you can tell how emotional Mr. Elliott got us, because a lot of these businesses, rightfully, because of what's going on in the economy, are hanging on by a string. So, by the sheer fact of some of these local contracts still being able to stay in effect, these engineers that, that are good-paying jobs that we want in Henry County will be able to stay here, and we're hoping, you know, with the economic recovery that we hope to see in the next eighteen months or so, that not only did it just save this one contract, but it saved the jobs in the future, and we keep these residents that have good-paying jobs here, and it has a multiplier effect that, that I think is good. And thank you so much for doing that. You know, I've known Mr. Elliott for years, to see him break down like that, you know, really shows me that this is difficult times for the economy, and any little help we can get for our local business people is, is a win in my book. So, thank you so much for being willing to come to the table with that.
Yeah, I'd like to go send the same thought, Mr. Croy. I appreciate you showing great character by doing that. My personal opinion is two home runs we hit this morning, the first one is Henry County, we're able to save a lot of money on the overall design. Second of all, we put people back to work, and we kept people within our own county working, and that was important to us. So, thanks again for doing that.
Anyone else? Mr. Holder?
Again, echoing what was said, I think this is a prime example of what people coming to the table and sitting down can get accomplished. There's a future out there. We all know that this is one project we're, we're dealing with today, but there'll be other projects, we know that. And it's important that we don't base it on it. You didn't have to do anything, and I understand that. We were to the point with the options that we had, there was, it basically was going to Croy, but Mr. Croy actually came to the plate and made it palatable and was willing to work with local contractors or local vendors that provide the benefit to our local economy. Didn't have, he didn't have to do that. But I know he's businessman enough to know there is a future, and there'll be other projects, and I just want to applaud you for that. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman?
I echo the sentiments of the Board as a, first of all, I'm a citizen of Henry County. Second of all, I'm a business owner in Henry County. I'm a taxpayer in Henry County, and I appreciate you guys coming to the table and getting together. I think that's, that's very admirable. There will be other work in Henry County, there's going to be, you know, we're not going to be in the situation we're in forever. So, you know, as a Commissioner, I, I definitely appreciate it, but I appreciate it because I'm a business owner too, and I understand a lot of what everybody's going through. Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussions on this item, you have before you a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a professional agreement with Croy Engineering pertaining to capital improvements at Atlanta South Regional Airport, and I will entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Preston and a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is District One Appointment The next item on the agenda is District One Appointment to the Zoning Advisory Board, and that's exhibit number eight. Mr. Holder?
Madam Chair, we had, Lee Spahas was my appointee to the Board, and he moved out of District probably two months ago now, and it's important that we fill that position, and with that, I'd like to nominate Mark Donnelly to be the District One Appointment to the Zoning Advisory Board.
We have a motion on the floor to nominate Mark Donnelly to the District One Zoning Advisory Board, and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item on the agenda is nominees for consideration for appointment to the Hospital Authority, that's exhibit number nine. As many of you know, we had this discussion several months ago, these terms actually expired back in December, but the current members continue to serve until new appointees are, are agreed upon for that Board. The Board of Commissioners have to nominate three individuals for each one of these vacancies, and you have before you a resolution that lists those nominees. We have Mike Gases, Taifa Butler, and June Wood for one of those, one of those positions. The second one, Dr. Gupta, Dr. Haynes, and Dr. Chosky for the second position. For the third position, Dr. Silvane, Dr. Darrell Anglin, and Gerald Taylor. If there are no other nominees to be added to those that are on the resolution for consideration, or if there's no discussion of this item, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, we have a number of those. We have March 6th, March 15th, March 19th, March 20th, April 16th, April 17th, and April 30th. If there are no additions to be made to those minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Did anyone sign up for public comments? Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
A man.
Ms. County Attorney?
A man.
Upcoming meetings and events, Wednesday, July the 4th, all county offices will be closed in observance of Independence Day, and we wish you and your family a very happy and safe 4th of July. Monday, July 16th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, July 17th at 6:30 p.m., we have regular Board meetings. If there's no further business to come before the Board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, before we, we, we adjourn, I just want to make, we're done with the business side of our meeting, I just want to congratulate you on the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority for a five-year appointment that was done by the Governor. I think it's the first time in the history that Henry County's had two people put on that Board, is that correct, Michael? So, and that's a five-year appointment, correct?
That's correct.
And y'all are responsible for regional transport, I mean strategically, for the entire state of Georgia transportation projects, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's a great appointment, I appreciate that, and I think it's going to be huge for Henry County, just to have two faces up there, not, not just one now, so thank you, I appreciate. Congratulations on that.
Thank you. I'm very excited and very honored that the Governor selected me as an appointment to that Board. It's only 15 members, and I'm looking forward to working not only for Henry County, but also for the citizens of the entire state. We certainly have a lot of challenges ahead of us, especially with the deepening of the Savannah Harbor and some issues that we're going to need to address, so I'm looking forward to getting started, but thank you, Commissioner Stamey.
And lastly, if you would, pass that down to Mr. Holder. Mr. Holder's always been passing cake this way, and I had Miss Cook come by, and made me a cake, and I said, "Miss Cook, I will share this with Mr. Holder, because he's the official pound cake maker of the Board," so I returned the favor.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
I think it's only a problem that I do that after we talk about paving in the head signs, so...
It doesn't look like half a cake, though, something's, something looks...
There wasn't a half to give him, because she brought it to me yesterday.
While we're kind of having a lively discussion, I'd like for BJ to, it's her first assignment on the griddle.
Mr. Holder.
She knows where it's coming from, she knows exactly what's coming there. Many years ago, $8 million, $8 million was taken from Bill Gardner Parkway to go to Jonesboro Road, which many of you, many of you travel on daily. Those were griddle funds controlled by griddle, and Mr. J.T. Williams said that we would get that money back one day, so now we have two votes out of 15 rather than one out of 15, so your first assignment is try to get my $8 million back.
I'm taking notes, that's the first thing I'll bring up.
Thank you.
If there's no further business to come before this Board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries five zero, we stand adjourned.